All right, I will call the regular session of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Right?
Here.
Delka?
Here.
Please join me for a moment of silence so we can reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as proposed or amended. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. We have an agenda. Item number two, public comments. Do we have anybody in the boardroom that would like to provide public comment? Do we have anyone on Zoom or on the line that would like to provide public comment? We have none. Item number three is claims and payments. I will make a motion that the Board of Supervisors approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements of such claims as allowed.
Second?
James?
This week's expenditures total $351,753.19. The two larger departments are secondary roads, $209,556, as well as the sheriff's office, $23,456. Everything looked normal.
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item number four, project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. We are continuing to clean out ditches around the county and we are beginning to start cutting brush. And then I also wanted to mention that our annual secondary roads, our fall safety meeting is this Friday, October 29th, at the shooting range. If any of you would like to come and speak to the secondary roads personnel, I'd invite you to do that. If you could let me know, we can tell you what time to be there. It would be in the morning, but you're more than welcome to come and speak to our personnel. And can I answer any questions? Thank you.
Thanks. Dr. Ed Bonney?
Good morning, Board. Dr. Ed Bonney, Blackhawk County Public Health. Department update. I just wanted to show you all our 2021 annual report. I know that was discussed during the joint session with the supervisors, that this is a copy that is going to go out to our community stakeholders. We also are planning on having a one pager in regards to our services, what we provide, and we'll disseminate that more broadly, just a one pager, and also about COVID, where vaccinations can, are located, so that people have more information. Prior to COVID, when we did our rebranding, one of the things that we found out was that the community was confusing some of our services and DHS, and so we want to provide that clarity. In the annual report, there's also a one pager, which is our strategic plan for fiscal year 2022 through 2027, and I won't go over that in detail, so it's discussed. But the priorities are communication, operation strategy and alignment, staff development, community partnerships and collaboration, technology and physical infrastructure, and public health governance. We've also made improvements with our vacancies. I believe we have, I want to say two and a half, but it's not really a half. We did make an offer to the community health program manager, and their start date's much later in November. As you all know, Dr. Hawk Kuno-Tura has resigned. He took a position in Minneapolis as the health equity director. So we are recruiting for the deputy director position, and also we had an internal hire that created a vacancy for an administrative position. So we just have about two vacancies currently, so that's exciting. But it takes, it takes time for us, but we'll get there. Any questions? And one last thing, sorry, our public health accreditation. We found out that our site visit, our virtual site visit, will be in January, January 10th, 11th, and 12th. So that week will be very hard for us, but we'll push through. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others in the boardroom? Do we have any department heads or elected officials on Zoom or online that would like to provide an update? Item number five, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from October 19th.
Second?
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. The consent agenda.
So moved.
Second?
Any comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item number seven, contracts and agreements. Item letter A is a resolution that the proposal from Envision Waterloo, Iowa, for $125,000 for the space needs facility assessment and master facility plan for Blackhawk County be approved and for the chair to sign as recommended by Rory Givens, maintenance superintendent.
So moved.
Second?
Rory?
Good morning, Board. Rory Givens, maintenance superintendent. As we had talked about last year, or last week, this is a proposal for the space needs and a facility assessment and a master facility plan. I had left some material that was developed back in 1995, a plan that was similar to this in the boardroom, and I'm just wondering if any of you have any questions with regards to that.
Any more questions for Rory? Any comments? It's been moved and seconded. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item 8A is a resolution that Hickory Hills Lagoon reconstruction project with costs not to exceed $525,000 be approved and for the chair to sign as recommended by Mike Hendrickson, Director of Conservation.
So moved. Second?
Mike?
You guys have heard about this quite a bit, but again, I have the, I have the proposal, the plan in front of us from Snyder and Associates. This is what we received in February of 2020. So again, the numbers we think are still going to be okay, and it's been about a year and a half, but again, this is, this is where those numbers came from, and you guys have heard the story, and it's, it's very important that, that we update that system at Hickory Hills.
And the Iowa DNR has been on us to do so, correct?
Yeah, they, they actually have, and it's just, we still have some time left. But through this whole process, obviously, they're involved with anything like this. And then the first thing that will be done, if this is approved, is that we will go ahead and send them the, the plan for their final approval. And once they approve that, we'll be able to go ahead and we could start to line up bids for construction through Snyder and Associates, so.
Or there are likely vendors in our area.
I would think so, yes.
Any idea how long this project will take, Mike?
You know, I, it, my guess, it would take a couple of months. It may be, it may not take that long. I, I'm not sure. And obviously, it would be something that they would probably be ready to go with in the spring. The nice thing about it is the way Snyder and Associates has laid this out, as it, with regard to the existing system and the new system, they literally won't have to interrupt any use of Hickory Hills Park. They will simply, when the new system is in place, the, the line that runs through the existing lagoon, they will, they will go along that line, bypass it, go around it, build the mountain system that we're putting in, and then when it's finished and ready to go, they'll just simply turn a valve, shut everything off to the lagoon, and on we go. So it is a, it is a very good plan. It won't interrupt use and, but I think safely, based on weather and things like that, probably a couple of months to get it built.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mike?
I just say it's a, it's a wonderful park. It's widely used, and it brings people into the community as well, so it's a good place to invest.
Yeah.
Hey, Dan, I've got one thing I'd like to add.
Yes, sir.
Could we, on the previous one, which we've already voted on, but this one and the future ones, could we also have part of the motion where the funding's coming from, for the record?
Sure. That's a great idea. Yes.
I also have a question, and this is probably for James. As far as all these items are concerned, if any of the costs were to exceed the amount that we've stated, obviously, they'd have to come back to the board, and we would just make an amendment, like typically we would do only regarding ARP money, funding.
Yeah, correct. Correct. So I had a conversation with Mike on this. There are going to be projects that we don't have a, a pinpoint dollar amount for, and so that's why we decided to do the not to exceed dollar amount. If, if it does, like you said, go over, then we'll just have to, we'd have to come back for approval. But when, in speaking with Mike, it sounds like these, these should cover it. Hopefully, they come in a little bit lower, but we, we should be covered on this, so.
Who made the motion and who seconded it? Because we can amend this one.
I believe I seconded it.
Schwartz?
What's that?
Craig.
Craig and Schwartz, okay.
Yep.
Sounds good that we had the, okay.
ARP.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item 8B is a resolution that the septic reconstruction project at McFarland Park, utilizing, and we'll amend it, utilizing American Rescue Plan funding with a cost not to exceed $60,000 be approved and for the chair to sign as recommended by Mike Hendrickson, Director of Conservation.
So moved. Second?
Mike?
Again, we're back on lagoon systems here and sewage treatment and water quality, and it's really what the ARP money is about. And this came to us a little bit late through staff, but again, as we, as we did some work, we figured out that the, the system that's in there is a 6,000 gallon tank. It's antiquated, so to speak. It's working well. But then again, it, at some, some point, it will need to be replaced. I mean, it's just, that's just the fact. It's, it's over 50 years old. And so we have looked into that. We've gotten some more information. It came kind of late from, from when I was here last week, but we've got more information. It looks like 6,000 gallon tank is oversized for, for that facility, and we can probably downsize that tank. So we're looking into that. We spoke with, we have spoken with the DNR. We've spoken with Blackhawk County Public Health with their guidelines, and so it looks like it's still going to be a pretty simple process. And eventually, we will bid that out. And, and again, probably, I'm going to guess that, that, you know, local labor will be done to put that back in, so.
How old do you think this system is, Mike?
I'm going to guess, you know, we, we didn't, Shereen, I couldn't find when McFarland Park was established. I'm sure it's in those records somewhere, but we're thinking that it's, it's 50 years old at least.
James, if, now, this, this project was somewhat unexpected, but if we didn't have this American Rescue Plan funding, and this project absolutely needed to be done, how would we fund it without this funding that came down from the federal government?
Well, in, in a situation like this, you know, we, we would probably try to use current budgeted dollars and then try to, try to ease back on capital projects as much as possible. Very similar situation when Blackhawk Park happened. There was kind of an emergency funding situation that happened, and, and he took care of it, and then backed off some capital. Other than that, it's really just fund balance that really has to come from, so.
Any other questions for Mike? Comments? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Item 8C is a resolution that the engineering for the Cedar Valley Nature Trail reconstruction project to be completed by Origin Design with funding from the American Rescue Plan funding with a cost not to exceed $250,000 be approved and for the chair to sign as recommended by Mike Hendrickson, Director of Conservation.
So moved.
Second?
Mike?
Again, and we have this proposal. Just to, to go backwards just a little bit, very quickly, we did put this bid out to engineers all across the Midwest. We, we received eight bids. We did, with help from the engineer's office, we did select an engineer. We put it in front of our county conservation board. They went ahead and approved the use of Origin as the engineer, and we've been waiting then to come up with funding to see if we could move ahead with the project. Now, again, this is a tool that's incredibly important to us because it, having it here, whether you chose to do this or not, as far as the construction goes, to have this tool in our hand and chase other funds down the road, if we don't use ARP money to do this, this trail work, this is very, very valuable to us. And because we're ready when those funds show up, and funds have been kind of falling out of the sky, for lack of better terms. And to be ready with, with a proposal like this or a design like this, we are going to be leaps and bounds ahead of a lot of people in the grant application process. And so that's what makes this, again, extremely important to have this document. So that's why we've proposed it today. Again, let me, you know, as we spoke, if, if we make, if you make this choice to go ahead and approve us to move forward with this engineer, there is a commitment, so to speak, to go ahead and do the construction part on the trail, which will be pricey. And there, there's a lot of work to do. But again, to have this opportunity to get this taken care of once and for all and get it off our plate, it literally gives us the opportunity to, we can step in and probably develop a whole new five-year plan, because this, this trail just almost takes the life out of us, you know, to keep it up and going and try to keep it open with its age. So again, this is an opportunity none of us saw, but it's an incredible opportunity that, that all of our recreational users would have the opportunity to, to take part in, so.
I see the Cedar Valley Nature Trail is really the kind of recreational jewel of this community. It's, it's something that people all over the country come to enjoy. I hosted the National Public Radio Rag Ride team this year, and they were even aware of, of this trail, and some of them had ridden it. And so it's, it's a remarkable thing that we have this community, and it's a, a smart thing to keep up on the maintenance of, which is a big job, because I believe it's one of the original rail-to-trail systems in the country.
It is. And, and, you know, this, this trail is recognized nationally, and what's, what's really put it on the forefront, this is what they call one of the signature trails, or one of the pioneer trails. You know, they, they are working on the, the Great American Rail Trail System that will go from Washington DC to Washington. We, those veterans that we talked about this year and, and that you, that we met and helped, gave them a night's stay and things like that, gave them meals and things like that, as they wrote, they were riding that trail, even though it's not done, they were riding that trail. And so this, this portion of that Great American Rail Trail, once it's finished, it's already well-known across the country, but we just want to be ready when they, when they get the rest of this thing built, and it's going to be years, but we want our portion of it to be ready to go. And so, yeah, it's, it's known nationally, so.
Mike, the portion of the trail that's in question today that we'll be voting on and so forth, and also the reconstruction in the future, is that all Blackhawk County?
Yeah, the, we're looking at the entire, it's about 26.5 miles worth of trail, and that is our portion. Obviously, Lynn County has the southern part of that, which is about the same, right around that. That trail originally was around 52 miles, something like that in the beginning. And, and again, Lynn County is working their way north. They don't have the, their entire 26 miles hard surface yet, but they are working north. They did a couple of miles this year. They're actually still working on it this year. That trail's been closed down in that part of the, the county, Lynn County. But yes, this is our portion, and this is really, with the exception of about a mile's worth of bike trail in Blackhawk Park, this is the only bike trail that we manage and maintain, so.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mike? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Delka?
Yes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you.
Item 8D, discussion, county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19.
Good morning. Dr. Bonney, again. Starting off with good news, we will most likely drop to substantial today, which means we're looking at 50 to 100 cases per 100,000 on a seven-day average. So we're, we're, we're going down. I expect to be in between substantial and high during the winter season. So let's not be too hopeful, just stays under substantial, but it will most likely go between substantial and high.
Yes.
Okay. And also, the, the Pfizer vaccine for the five and 11-year-olds are going to be discussed by the FDA on, on the 26th, so we're looking forward to that. Other than that, that's all I have. We're at 63% of our county residents fully vaccinated. Any questions?
All right.
Remember to get your flu shot.
Where do we get them? Or where can we?
Basement today.
I saw all kinds of employees.
Yes. Yeah.
Oh, you have to sign up to get them in the shot, or basement today?
There were some that we had a consent form.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So we sent on an email to staff last month about, just so that we weren't ordering too many, trying to get a better idea of how much staff would utilize. So yes, there are the vaccine clinics today. It goes till 11:00 AM, starts back up at 2:00 to 4:30, I believe, and then on Thursday, the same time. We do have some extra ones available, as some people have went to their providers or gotten it and originally signed up, but if anyone's interested, I'll do those consent forms down in HR, and we will get you a shot.
So if somebody has forgotten to sign up, they can just come down there, and there are extras so they can get a shot.
Yep. There's a, you know, a limit. We have only so many, but right now, we're looking pretty good.
That's only for employees, not for the public. All right. Item 9A is discussion, consideration of all aspects of the American Rescue Plan funding. James?
Yes, so right now, we have the Health Department coming up and presenting their list. The list that they have is for, like, just their operational, so the, their building of their space is, is with Maintenance Department, as well as their IT needs are with, with Kim in the, in the IT part. But I will let Nafisa come up and present her list with, with her slides, so. Yeah, I'm having issues on this. It's okay, more.
Okay, good morning, Board. Good morning again.
Morning.
All right, so I will start off with just most of the things that we need operationally. We looked at, in particular, our needs based on our response. So you will see on the first item here, we have the COVID-19 at-home testing translation phase one. We don't necessarily have a cost for that. It's just that translation has really taken a huge toll on us. It's, you know, we're, we're very fortunate to have a very diverse population, but for example, the other day, I found out that with Waterloo schools, they have like 75 languages, you know, and so we're not trying to translate everything to 75 different languages, but we look at the major, major languages that we have here in Blackhawk County. And so sometimes we partner with Embark to support us with the translations. So when you see this, it's more looking at subcontracts that we can have with other entities to provide us that support. If not, we're also going out and, and asking the different community leaders support in translating COVID-related items, especially like stuff like the home testing translation. We found out the state is actually now utilizing our videos that we, we translated. Contact tracers through the end of pandemic, we estimated five of them through March of 2022. So the 93,000 that you see is, is really more for, for salaries. So that's something that we've always had to kind of gauge. Because of our response, there's sometimes a high need for, for, for that level of investigation. So that's there. Fleet management, replace all of our current fleet over the life of the ARP funding. You know, we have some of our vehicles that have like brake issues, transmission issues, wiring issues, and with the cost of upkeep on older vehicles in our fleet, has started to dramatically increase each year. We did suggest, in working closely with Maintenance, if there's a possibility to have a garage built at the end of our parking lot to house our vehicles. But those are some of the things that we, we really thought, especially going out to the rural areas, the need to improve our, our fleet management.
Nafisa, I have a question there. Do you?
Yeah.
Approximately, how large is your fleet?
I think we have about 19 vehicles. Bridget, you're on. Can you answer that question?
Yeah, currently, we have 19 vehicles.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And how many are used on a daily basis?
All but one.
Pardon me?
How many of those, how many of those vehicles go home at night?
None.
I was told the one in Cedar Falls doesn't go home, or it's parked in Cedar Falls?
Yes.
Yep. There's two parked out in Cedar Falls, and they do not go anywhere. They don't go home. They just go back to the Cedar Falls garage.
Yeah, we try not to have any vehicles go home, like to residential, somebody's private residential, yeah.
And now, Mike, Mike brought up the replacement of the septic system. Although, we have many rural septic systems. I assume that your employees utilize these vehicles as an example?
Yes, yes.
To go out and inspect, inspect these systems?
Absolutely. The environmental health program, yeah.
Tom, did you have another question?
Well, in, in regards to that one, we've kind of kept the Health Department on a schedule over the years. A few years ago, probably, back in the 2000s, early 2000s, there was no schedule. We put not only the Sheriff's Department fleet on a schedule, we also rolled over the Health Department, put them on a schedule. I know the individual that was doing the rural septic inspections, when he retired, he was using a two-wheel pickup. When he retired, whoever took that job over deemed that they needed a four-wheel drive, so the board bought a four-wheel drive pickup. I kind of thought that we were staying current with the fleet, buying vehicles, trying to, every other year or every year on their budget, so. I'm kind of surprised that you want to roll the whole fleet over. I know a few years ago, a couple of your cars that you got rid of, I worked with the assessor's office to save them, because they only had 90,000 miles on there, and I thought that was ridiculous to be getting rid of cars that only had 90,000 miles on them, just because of miles. And they were good-looking cars. They weren't rusted out or anything. So I just want to make sure that we're being prudent. And to be honest with you, I didn't think we had that many cars in the Health Department.
Yeah. And, and Tom, just to supervise a little, to clarify, we do have a plan with James to start replacing vehicles over the next six years, but this is, we included this seeing it as beneficial for the ARP funds. Like, so this is not, I mean, just, we looked at items that we had, you know, a plan for at the county level, but now with the funding coming through, we looked at, okay, where are some of the, you know, how can this funding support some of the plans that we originally had for? So it's not like there wasn't a plan that, it's just that, these are things that the American Rescue funds will cover, so I don't know, but we do have a plan.
And when we, now, when we do, generally for the county, when we do purchase cars or vehicles, I remember correctly, we have plenty of local vendors that do
Yeah.
submit bids, and we generally purchase these vehicles from within Blackhawk County.
Yeah, you know, your spec- But, but, yeah, I mean, establishing a plan was something that we had discussed a little while ago that we would then present to this Board come budget time. So there have been some, you know, preliminary topics brought up regarding that, starting the rotation.
All right.
During this pandemic, how many of those cars were used on a daily basis?
During the pandemic, it was limited because most of the things were shut down, you know, were shut down. But this is, my understanding is the American Rescue Plan funds is to support also public health infrastructure. So it's on there because of, it's an allowable expense.
Nafisa, is there any, in this line item here that we're talking about on the fleet, is there anything on there that's different what we currently got, like a specialized vehicle that you plan on implementing, or a truck, or a van, or something that we currently don't have?
Yes, so when you see, okay, so let me finish, let me go down the list. But a vehicle, the mobile clinic is something that we've been discussing, and so that would be something that we would consider, and that would provide outreach, testing for STDs, vaccinations, all of that stuff into the community. And so that's, I would see that as also a vehicle, and also it would be our, it would be a combination of our health and dental. And one of the key things about this mobile clinic we're thinking about is also the bathroom in there because we can, we can easily test when we go, when we go out into the community. So again, I'm presenting these as the things that are allowable expenses based on the American Rescue Plan fund.
Can you send us this graphic after the meeting?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I'm sorry, Tom.
What's the estimated cost of that mobile lab or unit that you're talking about?
So we have, it's, all of these are just rough estimate. We didn't go into any kind of serious research, but we put up to three hundred thousand depending on size and layout.
And I see.
For the mobile lab?
The mobile clinic, the mobile vaccine, sorry, the mobile clinic.
Did Peoples Clinic just implement a mobile lab in a county area?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, I thought I saw something about that a few months past.
I know that it's, oh, sorry.
And I see one of the priorities with this mobile clinic is STD testing. Blackhawk County, we rank quite high, number one, yes.
Do you give us the numbers?
Maybe even in the Midwest.
I don't know that yet. I'm focusing on just us right now.
And the reluctance, or, no, you go ahead, Dan. Part of the reluctance of our citizens in seeking treatment for STDs is access.
It's access. I think that people want it to be more private, you know, so we have to have ways in which we provide these services in a more discreet way. I'll tell you that, you know, just last week, Friday, we were in the office, the disease investigation, for a few hours later because trying to track people down is, you know, so just finding ways for us to be more accessible. Sometimes when we can't find folks, we do go to homes and that can be, you know, it can be serious, you know, so.
I wonder, you know, I don't know, when it comes to the operations of the Public Health Department, we have contact tracers.
Yeah.
We've added some.
Mm-hmm.
Could we utilize them for the, I mean, with the STDs?
Yeah.
Okay, because, yeah.
It's a whole disease surveillance unit that does this, even going out and whatnot. So it's not just, they're not just doing an investigation on the phone, but also ensuring that people get treatment because that's the biggest thing. We want people to get treatment, so this is part of the outreach, testing and treatment.
I think of all the projects so far, this is the one that most fits the spirit of the American Rescue Plan funding, to invest in that public health infrastructure, because it's important, because this is the STD issue, it's not just an issue in Waterloo and Cedar Falls. This brings that kind of testing to the port city and to Hudson and to all these places where access can be more difficult and in a much more private and welcoming way that can help us get ahead of this problem that's been an issue here for decades.
And we're going to get into more of these discussions down the road. The economy has me concerned, so this money is, I hate to refer to it as a gift, but I don't want the public to think that we're spending money like drunken sailors either.
Yeah.
The optics, I brought it up during the joint meeting, the optics concern me, but I want, it's important to me that we utilize this money locally with our local vendors, our local businesses, so I want to be mindful of that so we can keep our local economy rolling. And like I've said before, I mean, Blackhawk County with prior boards and before my time, they've done such a good job of positioning the county where we are today. So we're in a much, and I keep, on occasion, I'll look back at our vision, the vision elements, and I want this, the spending of this, or utilization of this funding to fall into what was created years ago is how we should utilize it. But except, the biggest concern I have is the optics. I don't want the public to think we're spending money like drunken sailors.
I'm not sure if there's a way that we can legally do it, I would be supportive of any measure we can take that would give preference to local suppliers, just so we're investing that money in this community. I'm not sure what, because we've got competitive bid system and everything, and what could be allowable in that, but it's, I'd like to see as much of this money stay here locally to stimulate our economy.
And I'm sorry if I offended any sailors.
Hey, Dan, I just got one more thing I'd like to add.
Yes, sir.
Not this request, but all the requests that the Board's going to hear previously today and in the future, just one of the concerns I have is, an example like this mobile lab, say, costs three hundred thousand dollars, is this going to put a burden on the taxpayers five years down the road, or six years, or seven years, or four years, when it's deemed that it needs to be replaced? In other circumstances, I guess what I'm saying is, my concern is spending this money that we're calling ARP money that we got from the federal government, but is it going to cause a tax burden in the future when we have to replace or maintain or so forth? So that's going to be one of the criterias that I'm going to constantly keep it by, that it may be paid for now, but is it going to cause this more down the road through our tax, raising taxes to maintain it, whether it's whatever service, and I'm not talking about the Health Department, I'm talking about everything.
Good point.
So, I guess back to the Health Department, you know, so the other items that we had, you know, program equipment, replacement, those are just things at the programmatic level. We ask program, our program areas, you know, what are some of the things that you need to improve your programs? You know, the XRF, for example, that's lead, you know, one of the ordinances that we will be presenting to the Board of Supervisor is an updated lead ordinance for childhood lead poisoning prevention, which is an issue here in Blackhawk County, and so we want to make sure that we have the proper equipment to do these assessments. We do it in partnership with Waterloo City. However, again, this is something that we have to continue to work on and ensure that kids are getting tested and also they're getting treatment and their needs are being met. You know, we put officers and citizen stands for employees phase one or two, health communication equipment and department uniforms. One of the things that has been so critical with us in our response is that we've seen that when we go out and do vaccinations, you know, having our logos is key to help us just clarify what we do as an agency versus other entities. And so it's easier for us to collaborate with places like Unity Point Mercy One, they come in, they have their scrubs and their logos, and so that's something important to us. Also, environmental health, you know, going out in the rural areas, you know, sometimes they've asked for jackets or, you know, hats, that just helps identify them clearly so that there's no confusion or mistaken identity on the property. So those are things that are reasonable. Our health communications equipment, we have a great, the chapel is a great area to be able to host and do training, however, the sound is just very difficult there, and so, and that is the only space we have in the building to be able to do bigger trainings. And so just improving the level of sound also in that area would be helpful. And as I stated, the mobile clinic, that's one really, I mean, the clinical staff, you know, and I am supervisor little, I completely understand where you're coming from. So most of these items that I've asked of the department is to be intentional about, you know, what does it look like five years down the line when it comes to, you know, sustainability? It's something that we're intentional about even as we develop our programs, to have a sustainability plan that is also not a burden to our taxpayers. So those are the operational things that I had. Now I want to kind of switch gears if there's no questions. All right, so I wanted to talk about the public health workforce. You know, I think that it'd be unfair for me as the Director to talk about, you know, items that are needed without talking about the impact of COVID-19 on our workforce. We're now eighteen months into the pandemic, and as you all know, we're still dealing with the virus every day in a very real way across the country. Back in early spring of 2020, none of us knew where we would be, but here we are, and we're all aware of just how devastating the pandemic has been for so many in a variety ways. We know many of our employees have faced their own personal strength, personal struggles due to COVID-19, whether it's been their health or that of family members, the loss of friends and family, or financial challenges. Yet they have continued to answer the call to serve our community with the greatest care and love, and we are thankful to them for that and will always hold tremendous appreciation for the dedication they've displayed. No matter what their role or position, serving in public health during this time has felt different than ever before. From providing contact tracing and investigation in intense and difficult settings, to adapting to often evolving protocols and policies, and working through continuing staffing challenges, our Health Department staff has held their head up high. Each and every one of them has continued to stand ready to serve our community with a humble and dedicated heart. They are all to be commended for standing strong against these challenges. So this scenario continues to be very difficult for many of them, and I'll tell you why. We've been also the mental health providers, you know, during this pandemic, and one of the things that just worries me is the fact that I know as a team, we haven't taken care of ourselves, like, it's been very visible. I've had moments of difficulty just because it's been on the go. So the physical and emotional effects are great, and we cannot stress enough the importance of everyone making time for rest, rejuvenation and renewal ways. So one of the things that, you know, for me as a public health director is really the importance of recognizing this dedication and service. We know today the cost of replacing government employee can be as much as a hundred and fifty percent of the salary of the previous employee. The American Rescue Plan Act allows for recipients to be able to use funds for essential work such as public health staff for their time responding to the COVID-19 public health emergency. The compensation is in addition to a worker's regular rate of wages and is not a substitute for normal earnings. Presently, various sectors across the countries are showing their support to essential workers from morale-boosting activities to compensation. I recognize this is a very sensitive topic, and my ask today is not for me at all, but it's for the public health staff that are burned out and still dedicated. The Board, all I'm asking is that I would like the opportunity to work with Human Resources and bring a proposal on how we can address COVID recovery, you know, what that looks like for our essential workers, and show our appreciation for their hard work and commitment to our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to add one thing. I not only like to commend the Health Department through this period that the county and every county has been going through for the last few years, but also our entire staff throughout the county. We have people in the courthouse that deal with the public on a daily basis, and we don't check, we don't know what comes through that door on a daily basis, but yet we still have workers that have to face that and work to get the job done. When we were at the peak of the COVID last year, we had workers that were off, but we also to maintain county services, which we have to do, we had workers that were in here. So along with the Health Department employees, I'd like to commend all our employees, whether it be the Sheriff's Office or any employee that works in that courthouse, that works on a daily basis with the public, I, we have to kind of look at them all as a group, in my opinion.
Yeah, and this is, I mean, it's tough to pull out any group of employees and recognize them financially over others, because as a county, in the very beginning of the pandemic, we did pretty darn good by our employees. And we have contract employees, like the security guards are a great example, that they're not our employees, they're contracted through another company, and they've had, they had direct exposure with so many citizens. It's a tough one. You know, my concern is how do you pick and choose? I do not support it because I think we've done pretty good by our employees. And as we go into the future, I mean, the things that concern me are the economy, inflation, taxes and services. We need to maintain our services. I'd actually like to see our taxes go down. That could be a distinct possibility for Blackhawk County. But what our citizens are worried about is the economy, the inflation, they still want to get their services. During the whole pandemic and up until this point, I don't think we denied anybody services we were providing before the pandemic. I think the only thing that changed was how we provided them. And we're doing some things through contract negotiations to try to bring equity to our employees. I mean, this is a tough one, and I knew this was coming, but it's the elephant in the room right now. And, you know, I'd like to hear from the other supervisors as well.
I would like to see a plan from public health and HR. I think it is difficult to do the pick and choosing thing, but the legislation did that for us, in that it's not all employees that are eligible for a bonus or premium pay out of this funding. It's specifically for people in public health, and I believe public safety, but public health is really who was at the forefront and continues to be at the forefront of responding to this pandemic, and they've been really stretched to the limit, and so I'd like to see what that would look like so that we can compare it to all the other priorities that we have for this funding.
Any others?
A difficult task, I guess. I'm not sure where we begin, I'm not sure where you'll begin. Obviously, there were a lot of hardships, personal as well as departments. I think, like I said, we've certainly had county employees in those situations as well, and others from your department. they've been really stretched to the limit. And so I'd like to see, um, what, what that would look like so that we can compare it to all the other, all the other priorities that we have for this, this funding.
Any others?
A difficult task, I guess. Um, I, I'm not sure where we begin. I'm not sure where you'll begin. Um, obviously there were a lot of hardships, personal as well as departments. Um, I think, like I said, we've certainly had, um, county employees in those situations as well, and others from your department too. Um, right now I'd have difficulty, um, supporting it. I don't know, like I said, because I have no idea what that would look like. And I see so many people that we have as essential. And I know, Chris, as you said, those that have kind of gone above and beyond when you think of essential, but I think, um, qualifying that's difficult. And, um, but like I say, I'm not saying that you certainly aren't welcome to look at that and see if there's something you'd like to present more, but.
I think that the biggest thing for me is to clarify, it's not just compensation, but also the wellbeing of employees, right? And so we have this day, for example, in November coming, um, they, they gave us, um, it's called, uh, COVID recovery, someone that's going to do some mental health and a facilitation and stuff like that. But we don't have any funding even in, in our bucket to be like, okay, how do we support kind of staff decompress? Like, you know, so it's, it's, so there's, it's, it's not just about like a financial, but also like, how do we look at the wellbeing? Cause my, my biggest concern is burnout exhaustion. And then, um, as you all see that there's, you know, um, i- i- it just takes a toll, you know? And so I think for me, if I can frame it in the wellbeing, that makes, that's what I'm really asking you all, like, how can we look at, you know, and I, I use the word essential workers because I am in, I, I, I do understand there's been others, you know, um, and I've talked to sheriff also because, you know, it's, it's, we, we were at the frontline, but when you see also the impact on, on staff and they're still going, I, I mean, we have to figure out, how do you, how do you address that? So that's really what I'm talking about, is the wellbeing.
Well, maybe if we look at something, at overall wellbeing of our staff, what we could do, that would be something appreciated because I said, we've all had hardships or departments have, whether it's a disaster, then everybody has to work 24/7 trying to resolve that, or whether it's, I know the sheriff's office has had certain, um, things occur that required their attention more so than, you know, regular staffing. So that certainly I'm not opposed to. I just thought from a compensation standpoint, I thought it was going to be difficult. So if we broaden that.
I agree with what's being said on compensation. Uh, everybody, everybody that works for the county has worked their butts off through this period and done their jobs well. And I am, am not going to stand up for one department and give out bonuses to them and let the other ones suffer because of it. And everyone's suffering through mental health issues on a daily basis. Every person out there, every person out in the public is suffering. So there's a lot of people that we've got to look out for and how we spend this money. Like I, I, I hear it too much that, oh, if we don't spend it, somebody else will. Well, we got to take care of ourselves, but we've got to do it responsibly. And some of the stuff isn't responsible.
And I think what Dr. Inboonier is looking for right now is to work with, for us to give direction to HR on what to consider, or even to consider anything. And it sounds overall like EAP bolstering. Yes, Tom?
Yeah, for the record, again, uh, I, I commend all our employees, but I, I just can't support this. Um, uh, the board has been working hard the last few months, and we really don't want to talk too much about it on how to, um, take care of all of our employees, uh, through a program that we're going to possibly implement here shortly. Uh, that will affect all our employees. And I just can't pick and choose. And, um, I, I just, like I said, uh, we probably had maintenance workers that were out at Pinecrest doing work in the thick of things. And I, I just think everybody did their part. And I thank them. And I also feel if you talk to HR, HR, we, the county had some programs during this, the peak of this, that allowed our employees to do things, um, that the county covered and took care of. So, uh, we've, we've done a good job staff-wise. And, um, I think we're going to, with the program that the board's been working on for the last few months, uh, with legal, um, I, I think we're doing some good things, but I can't pick and choose. I probably wouldn't support this either at this time.
I, I'll ask HR, do we have a overall county position in regard to the safety and health of all county employees? Is there any one person within your department or currently that evaluates that, provides those services?
Oh, thank you. Um, so we don't have necessarily one dedicated position when it comes to the safety and wellbeing of the county staff. We have a wellness committee, um, although since I've even been at the county, uh, which back in 2015, I don't know how frequently that committee really meets and what kind of resources they have in order to create initiatives or programs or update things, um, for our staff. We do have the EAP, um, we do have, you know, some resources, um, available to staff, but this may be kind of an opportunity to look at, you know, can we improve in the wellness, um, in utilizing this for all staff? Um, I understand, you know, everybody's concerns here. This is a significant thing to unpack and to determine and to evaluate. Um, and I appreciate everybody's perspectives on this when it comes to compensation or wellbeing for public health, public safety, and of course the, uh, remaining staff that support all the county operations as well. But yes, I guess we don't have no, a dedicated role. Um, it's carried out through our department and kind of pushed to the departments to, uh, to determine what that wellness is for their, for their staff and using our resources as well, but.
Thank you.
If we have them take a look at, there may be some of these wellbeing ideas that we'd be interested in for, for all of our staff. It's just the, the funding part of it is that we know that, um, public health and public safety employees would be eligible to use this American Rescue Plan funding. We just might have to look at other funding, whether it's, um, our, our healthy fund balance or, or others to, to make up the gap to, to do something, you know, more across the board. So it's, so I, I think it's, I think it's worth looking at.
Now, as we're, uh, moving through these projects, I mean, it's been kind of cumbersome. It's, it's been good for us to get educated on each individual project that comes up, like the septic system at McFarland Park. But I'm just wondering if there's a more streamlined process we can come up with to approve this funding through a resolution. Uh, I think it's incumbent upon the board members to ask questions of the department heads, ask questions of James on each particular, not just each project, but each line item within a project. But I'd like, it'd be nice if we get to a point where we could just, uh, through a resolution, approve funding for phase one projects. But board members should make department heads and James aware of what line items they're not in favor of. Um, it, it, the dialogue and the communication is important. I'm just, this, there's a significant amount of funding that we, uh, are supposed to utilize to bolster our economies. And if we go through it line item by line item, we're going to be at this forever. James, would you like to?
Well, I mean, I, I, I agree with you. I had, I had made a point, um, last week and, and, um, I mean, I, I, I guess overall, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you. If, if we go through every single thing that we were, uh, discussing last, last week, um, you know, it, it can be pretty cumbersome and, and having a resolution or a motion for, uh, absolutely everything, um, could, could be quite a bit of, quite a bit of work and time and, and that kind of thing. So I don't know if there is a point where, uh, this board will look at a list and just say, yep, all of us are happy with this list and then approve the list, uh, as it sees. I don't know if you guys want to, uh, start pulling these projects out that you want a little bit more information on, uh, and then approve it. But, um, you know, looking at, from a timeline, uh, we'll be doing a budget amendment here in December, and all of these projects in phase one should be on that, uh, budget amendment. So, uh, when you look at, um, you know, when you look at publishing timelines and approval timelines, uh, we're probably looking at maybe a three to four week window of what we can, what we can, or I guess what I would like to see on, um, getting approved. So.
And on the flip side, we need to keep the public informed and maintain transparency in what we're utilizing this funding for. Now that slows it down. But I guess what I'm saying is, any, if, James needs to be hit with questions.
I'm curious, what's in phase two? What kind of projects? I guess I'm just.
Um, you know.
clarity on phase one versus phase two?
I don't, I'm, I'm having computer issues on, and I can't log into Zoom right now, otherwise I'd show you. But, um, let me see if I can pull it up here.
Well, I mean, just in general, I, we can go over those another time too, James, but I just meant when.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do that. But re, I mean, really, any, any, anything in phase one where the shovel-ready projects that were, were ready to go. Um, phase two is something that can wait. And I'm, I'm trying to think of anything that's in phase two. Um, but I can, I can get a list out to the board here. Um, office reconfigurations, a lot of those were in phase two. Um, and especially after we get this space study completed, so.
After we get that space study, then there's going to be new phase two projects that may arise.
Then it's going to put us under the gun too.
It's going to put us under the gun, yes.
Yeah, because we're going to only have a short period, a short period of time to get these projects done, which some of it we can look at. I mean, it doesn't take a rocket scientist to look at some of these projects to see, see that need to be done, that, like Mike's projects that we're talking about and other things like Lisa mentioned the garage. I mentioned that to James. It's a damn shame those cars sit outside every day out there. There's cars that sit out here. We ought to be ashamed of, there's, uh, 20 cars that sit over in the sheriff's office every day out in the elements and stuff. We've had some, uh, areas where they could sit inside. Just, I mentioned the James putting up one of those, uh, those port, uh, carports, but like 19 of them right straight down and then closed, enclosed three sides of it. That would take care of, at least get them out of the elements for a few hours every day.
I'm sure Rory has ideas.
I didn't talk to Rory about it, talked to James about it. Rory's got his own project that, and just like Kathy's project, that should be on the front burner too, getting her moved out to the site, out, out to, out by secondary roadside and adding onto that building so she can work from there. And that'd free up that area.
I don't think it started as Kathy's project, did it? I was going to say, I thought it was kind of, it came up in a meeting, maybe that that would be a good option?
I think it's a real good option.
Well, that's what I meant, maybe we should.
There's, well, and the option of moving the, um, attorneys out of the basement and over to the, uh, DHS building and moving DHS out to Pinecrest.
And I think this is going to be a beautiful opportunity to create efficiencies within our service delivery, like with elections. So the flow of voters goes more smoothly because, well, we see we've had lines snaking around in the building. It's actually inhibited delivery services by the recorder's office and others. So we're going to see some opportunities to move some departments around and create greater efficiencies.
That's the only one I really heard any efficiencies being discussed. The others, I guess maybe we need more information on because moving the attorneys to another location, I guess I'd like to know what the efficiencies are for that. Or?
Ask them. They're, they're down in the basement. That's not efficient for them to be down in the basement.
Well, they're in this building though, and there are efficiencies there.
That's a long ways away, Linda, across the street.
I'm not saying it isn't, but we have security in this building.
Come in and talk to them. Come in and talk to the attorneys.
They can come in and talk to me.
All right.
You gotta be here.
Yes, sir.
Over the years, this discussion's come up about moving, uh, various departments, the engineers department and so forth. And the, um, constant factor that always came back was, uh, if somebody comes in to conduct business in one area, engineers, do they have, it's, it's more convenient if they have to go to another department. Within the county, we're all right there. Uh, if you start spreading them out all over, now you got the public has to bounce all around to conduct their business. So the whole idea of keeping various departments in the courthouse for the convenience of the, uh, taxpayers. Uh, and that's was one of the reasons why we, we talked about moving the engineers department years ago. And that was one of the factors that came up was what if they have to have to do business not only there, but in another part of the courthouse? So that's just something to think about in the future.
Um, that's what that pit space study will do for us, I guess. It'll look at the efficiencies as well as the.
That's what we were working on down the road where the food bank is and stuff years ago, was putting a one stop down there. And that wall got dropped there too.
I'll be curious to see how many customers actually utilize a particular department in a month.
Yeah, yeah. So it's just not easy. I know, like you said, what you're asking to streamline, I just thought it's just not as easy as what.
I'd say most of her Kathy's are phone calls.
And I would assume like the recorder's office with technology, their customer out the window has probably diminished. I mean, that's my theory. And Sandy's not, they're heading an agreement, so that, that theory is proven.
You know, seasons, there's peak times when we are busier. At times we use a larger counter, but kind of.
But it's temporary.
Right, exactly.
NHR down in the basement, and it is a basement. Let's not try to put lipstick on it by calling it the lower level.
A lot of people have offices in basements.
I did for years and mold grew on my back. But I assume we have a lot of walk-in customers that are employees down in HR. So could they be more strategically placed to provide a better service to our customers, which are employees?
We've talked about HR.
We spent a lot of money in that lower level down there to, uh, make it more appealing to our customers over the years.
And it looks nice, except for the paint color in the county attorney's office. I blame that on Rory. He must have picked it.
In the attorney's office, you didn't like it. I think you need to talk to Brian about that one.
All right. Any other, uh, comments?
Not an easy task.
No, it's not an easy task. We've got a lot to do. We're going to be busy as a board. Yes, Tom?
I just got one more question for Nafisa. Uh, I take her for presentation. It was excellent. Uh, I understand her requests today were all operational. Uh, does any of, uh, the items you've covered today, Nafisa, does any of them, uh, would include a staff increase?
No, no, absolutely, absolutely not. No.
Okay.
That was one of the questions I had too, with the mobile unit, the mobile clinic.
No, the mobile unit, no, it would be, um, it would be run by staff, current staff.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments, questions, or concerns with the American Rescue Plan funding? Item number 10, any report or information from the board?
We certainly need to congratulate, I guess, Supervisor Schwartz, I guess. You and Chris both. I was going to say, Chris, I mean, you and Logan both. I said on your marriage.
Thank you.
Congratulations. And I, it was a beautiful day and it looked like a beautiful event all the way around, so.
Thank you. Now, we're really excited for our next chapter of our life and, and thank, um, all the outpouring of love and support we've received in this community. And I, I want to, uh, give a shout out to county conservation staff. We made the deliberate choice. We wanted to support our county, uh, employees. So we, uh, held the reception at the, um, Rotary Reserve, and it was absolutely gorgeous. And the staff was always wonderful to work with. And it's, uh, if you're looking for a place to host the wedding, uh, Rotary Reserve is, is, I think, the best place in the Cedar Valley. And so, so check it out. And, and, and Mike and everybody are just really great to work with. And, um, just, just very excited for our, uh, next phase of our life here.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Little, any?
Nope.
Mr. White?
Congratulations to you, Chris.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
All right.